This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we will open the meeting and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the class. I am the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in the first order of business, it looks like we have Lori here.
So I just hope that everybody reviewed what I sent earlier, so I don't want to go through it page by page, bullet by bullets. So this is the year end report, which didn't really happen until January, but it's going to be some delays. So the document really just, we wanted to give, because there's a lot of new folks and a lot of new positions, we wanted to give everybody sort of an overview of what the commission does, the Development Commission, what it does, what its purpose is, what our goals have been. And we've been working for the past several years against the 2014 Comprehensive Plan. I mean, our mission and our purpose is to execute the Comprehensive Plan. And the last update was in 2014. And that plan had a series of sections on government structure and function, economy and tourism, community facilities, mobility, environment, housing, and land use and design. So you can get as much detailed information as you want at futurelakeplacid.com. You'll also see in the document our membership. I haven't heard back from Mike Butler about whether or not he wants to rejoin us for another term. And we are seeking new members, as we can have up to 10, and you'll see that currently we only have four, six. So we're working to really rebuild the commission a bit, as well as all of the committees. The other document that I sent out was a PowerPoint that goes over all of the committees of the Development Commission. So the structure of the commission is that it sits underneath the town and the village boards and serves at their pleasure. There are four standing committees, the Appearance Committee, the Arts Alliance, the Housing Committee, and the Community Day Committee. There are also then ad hoc committees, and I won't go through all the individual committees unless you want me to. There are also then ad hoc committees. So for example, there was a Communication Committee that redid the website with Anita and Haley and Kate Thompson as members. There also was a Communications Committee that worked with the Land Use Committee on the public input to the short-term rental law updates and those community meetings that we had for that. Some of the committees have sort of fallen off a little bit. The Environmental Committee had existed several years ago, isn't really active now. And then the Land Use Committee and the Short-Term Rental Committee is also one of our ad hocs as just a couple of examples. So the priorities for 2014 that we've been working against have really been in the general topics of open space, government efficiency, community resources and facilities, housing and economic development, the environment and sustainability, as well as mobility. So the primary goal for 2023, the first thing that we're doing is working on a process, a visioning process to update the Comprehensive Plan. So we have acquired some grant money as well as money that the town and village boards have each given us to hire consultants to do the visioning process for it. Those RFPs, I believe, went out while I was away. I don't know for sure, but I'm pretty sure they did. So we're waiting now to get those RFPs back to choose the consultant that'll help us through that visioning process. And you know, we envision a robust process with a lot of public input. We want to make sure that it's not just a handful of people deciding what the priorities of the community are. And that the priorities that we're working on and that we're thinking are the priorities are both the board's priorities and the community's priorities before we move forward. Then you'll see the significant list of accomplishments from 2022. A lot of work was on in the background. There are a lot of committees. There are a lot of community members involved in these committees. So there were a dozen or so proposed updates and amendments to the Land Use Code, the Short-Term Rental Report with recommendations. There's a Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee that's working on this visioning process. We have the Housing Committee that finalized their housing plan in 2022. The Appearance Committee was working on, sorry, the Peacock Park Master Plan, the beach fence recommendations, as well as the Communication Board with the Freelander Sisters, Community Day, which was a really big success this year, five to 600 participants, and a dinosaur. There were 32 nonprofit organizations in the nonprofit pavilion, which was also a big moment of growth for that. The Arts Alliance got itself underway. We're working with the local school districts on a street art project right now. And then we have some other initiatives. We also work with Skidmore College to do some research on the Olympic art, the state of the Olympic art, the history of that art. And so there is a report that I can share on that as well. The commission made recommendations for the West Valley Mobility Improvements and Sidewalk Improvements. We initiated the process for LEED certification and then worked on the website, as well as, as I said, the short-term rental. There's also a Climate Smart Communities Task Force that Haley leads the way on. So I think the primary purpose of tonight too is to just look at the initiatives for 2023. As I said, it is our goal to really align what we're trying to do and what we think the priorities are with what the boards think the priorities are. And then be able to bring that to the communities as we go forward to vision this new Comprehensive Plan. So the document that I sent out sort of prioritizes what we think we need to do first and what we think are most important. But we're looking for your input on, is that the correct order? Are those the right priorities? And are there things that you feel like we're missing? The updating and the revision of the Comprehensive Plan is really number one for us. So we are working on that, but we'll continue to work from the 2014 plan in the interim. The Housing and Economic Development Committee, that Peter Rowland resigned as the chair, so we're still trying to identify a chair to give that committee some more life. It's a really important issue, but it's extremely complex. And it's a lot of time to understand all of the things that we need to do. So we are doing some research work on a deed restriction program similar to what Vail has done and similar to what they're doing out in Old Forge. So Emily, please, helping us spearhead that. And then we'll look at some further amendments to the Land Use Code is also on that list. And then we're participating in the implementation of the Destination Management Plan with that group that we just put together. In our minds, the third priority is a government efficiency work and the potential for court consolidation as elections come up in April. Unfortunately, Dean's not here. He's much more well-versed on that than I am. And then reevaluating the structure for maintaining parks and reconsidering the consolidation of the parks maintenance structure. Community Resources and Facilities, a community plan to provide affordable childcare. As I understand it, the town has already started an initiative, and so we would work in support of and in partnership with them on those initiatives. Social Connectivity and the community use of the beach house, continuing to grow and develop Community Day as a way to connect with the community, and then to evaluate and improve access to facilities and natural resources like Mirror Lake, ways to load, easier ways to load and unload boats to get onto the lake. In the past, we did the kayak rack, which is down on the lake, but not so easily accessible. And then potentially complete the historic bike tour and update our trail maps and the walking tour. In terms of open space, we want to continue with the development of Peacock Park and the retaining wall and the boat launch. We had gone out and asked for some grant money for sidewalk and fencing, which was denied because it lacked the proper environmental focus that they were looking for. So we believe that the retaining wall and the boat launch will fit better with those grant programs. They're just much more complex projects because we're touching water, obviously. So DEC, APA, Army Corps of Engineers, and trying to figure out how to shore up the shoreline, as well as have another location for people to be able to launch boats onto the lake from that area. Evaluate updates and improvements to Teddy Bear Park, Jutro Park, and Milpon Park with the Rotary and with the Garden Club as partners. The Rotary has access to grant money for those kinds of things. And hopefully, working with the Garden Club, we can figure out how to get some landscaping in that would take little to no maintenance. We'd like to continue to work with the Rotary on more bus shelters to fulfill all of what they've already done, work there, to re-energize the tree board and the certifications that come with the work that they do, and then to explore public art projects in parks and public spaces. In terms of environmental stability or sustainability, we're looking to continue the LEED certification process. We have a student from Clarkson who's working with us and with Orta. And there is a LEED certification committee that's working on that process as well to update that. Georgia Jones is going to revitalize the Environmental Committee, which I mentioned earlier. The exploration installation of more EV chargers with Clarkson University, and then the protection of natural resources, working with the Mirror Lake and Lake Placid, or both Mirror Lake and Lake Placid with the Watershed Association and the Shoreowners Association. We're also doing a Natural Resources Inventory with Cornell University. And then to have a look at some policies around dark sky and some ideas around dark skies, as well as a recycling analysis. It's a lot. Undergoability, a complete streets plan, as well as transportation improvement initiatives and getting some of those started. And then lastly, other recommended initiatives will be to continue to improve communication engagement going forward. Public art will continue to be a focus. We have Skidmore students this semester working on gathering more information about the Olympic art and each specific piece and understanding each specific piece. We continue to work on street art. We actually have the beginnings of a mural project that we'll be talking about in the next couple of weeks. We were approached by an organization called Statues for Equity about doing some monuments, but the group has decided that we're going to decline that particular offer. And then Appearance is going to continue to work on the continuity of look and community brand identity through some of the work we've done with fencing and sidewalks and that kind of thing in those recommendations. So that's kind of how we see it. And now I guess the thing is, what we want to know is how you see it, and are there things that you think should be priorities that we don't have as priorities or should be in any way reordered or emphasized? I know I have to be quick, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, first of all, just to acknowledge, there's an awful lot there. And in terms of the, you know, what's been accomplished for the 2022, you know, there's a huge volume of work. It's worth noting that it's all kind of volunteer input, which is, you know, tremendous kind of community asset and great to see that involvement. You know, and that, you know, maybe the other thing that's really helpful is just how there's a lot of work to enrich into leveraging partnerships, both kind of within the community, you know, different important organizations around the community, and also academic partnerships and some support, you know, consultancy.
Yeah, and I think a lot of the projects too are long-term ongoing. Like, we've been working the master plan for Peacock Park since 2018. I mean, there was a bit of a derailment because of COVID, but a lot of these projects, just it takes, you've got to take them in small bites, go after grant money in pieces, and just begin to build on that, on that process until they're done. It takes some focus to get that done throughout, so.
There was no mention in this report what there was in the 2014, but aging in place. I don't know if it necessarily needs to be a priority as far as everything else, but we don't seem to be focused, any attention on how we can help that population.
Yeah, it may fall under some of the other categories, but I think it's good to call it out specifically because it was part of 2014.
Yeah. It's only because I can relate to it.
Lori, I think as usual, you've done a very thorough job. I mean, it does sound like an awful lot on your plate. I can't think of anything to add to that. Does any of the board have anything they'd like to add?
And you can certainly look at it and decide that you want us to start, you know, instead of having one v. one, one v. four. I mean, we don't, and some things are going to be on this list. We might start them. We might not get to them this year, or we might start them and they won't be finished this year, obviously. Because it's about this, you know, this vision and strategy. And when we ultimately begin to hear from the community about what they want for the upcoming Comprehensive Plan, it may change the list completely.
So from 2014 to 2023, I mean, is that, how often do Comprehensive Plans, should they be updated?
Typically, five to 10 years.
Okay.
So we're within the window. And it's going to take, you know, even if we get, we're planning to get the visioning process in this year, but the plan itself isn't going to be written before the end of next year. And we don't have, you know, we haven't identified exactly who's going to write it, how it's going to be written. Are we going to have a consultant write it? Or are we going to do that to some extent on our own? You know, we, the committee doesn't feel, the commission doesn't feel like it's going to have a significant, the goals and the priorities aren't going to be significantly different, we don't think, from 2014, but how we approach them may well be. But that's why we want to make sure that we get community input so that we're not, you know, we don't have blinders on.
How much was the grant for?
$98,000.
Which is, I think, you know, going to allow some of that deep engagement, which is great. And I guess, you know, the question about, I think, that the committee is trying to get right is making sure that, you know, the costs for someone to do the write-up don't overshadow the community engagement piece, because that's where the legal means of substance is. So I think that that's, you know, it's great that that, you know, there's an open mind about that and the, and need to see what's coming back with the other things.
Yeah, I think the visioning process is critical, and we can potentially get more grant money to write the report too. But we felt it was more important to take the money that we knew we could get now and really put it in making sure that we have a clear and comprehensive understanding of what the community expectation is. Because I think we've, we've done a pretty good job of keeping ourselves a secret. So we do fully intend to change that going forward as well and let people know what work we are doing and try to get more members of the community to participate, potentially to get some student participation from local schools, as well as the participation we get at the university level, which is great, has been a great asset to us.
Well, maybe what we can do for you, Lori, then is by our next workshop, maybe we could all review what you've got and see if we want to change the priority or leave it the way it is. Anita, if you could just make sure we don't get that out of sight, out of mind.
Yep.
Yep.
Once again, thank you very much for all the work and spearheading all of this.
You're welcome. And I'll be one of the avenues to help kind of keep that comms channel.
And I'm presenting it to the town tomorrow night. Yeah, so they may have their, they may have a different set of priorities or the same set of priorities to you, and then we'll just have to work it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Yeah, thank you very much.
From the islands, from my hiding place.
Well-earned.
Yeah. Kind of necessary.
And John, it looks like we have you next on the, on the agenda. I don't know if you'd like to come up, but stay where you are. You're more than welcome either way.
Well, I can stand.
Okay.
Before I start, I, to dovetail on this, I serve on the Arts Alliance Committee with Lori, and nobody works harder than on these things than, and again, as you said, it's volunteer, but just the amount of work she's put in on the Arts Alliance, I can imagine what the rest of it looks like.
Well, now I don't have a job, so it's okay. I got a little more time, right, than this woman. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm John Linger. I'm here with my wife Karen. We live on Marcy Road, just up the hill. And we've got some concerns. We're here to advocate for the return of peace and tranquility to Marcy Road. And, you know, we sent a letter a little earlier, and thank you, Mayor, for responding to that letter. And we appreciate your comments. But we wanted to follow up on that a little bit. We were representing the people who live on Marcy Road. There aren't many of us, but, but half the people who live on Marcy Road are year-round residents. And I think that, that means something. The road itself, as you probably know, is barely a lane and a half wide. This time of year, it's only a lane wide because of the snowbanks. But it is not, it is, it is not a major road. Certainly during the Main Street construction in the FISU Games, the road was integral to managing traffic, you know, around Main Street or on Hillcrest. And I think everybody, all of us were happy to do that. And in furtherance of the successful completion of these projects, and I think that that's what happened. However, as a result, you know, the volume of traffic has increased dramatically on that road. And it's not only the volume of traffic, it's the nature of the traffic. It can be aggressive. And, you know, people who are used to driving on that road a lot, you know, sometimes they don't, they just zip up. And it's, you know, if you meet somebody at the, at the sort of a blind spot, it's, it's always a little chaotic. During the construction phase on Main Street, the, an entrance to the upper MBT parking lot was opened, and that facilitated the movement of traffic. And we all understood that. We were, we were led to believe at the time that that was going to be temporary. And that's what we expected. We knew that after the construction was done, it would remain open for the, for the FISU Games, and that was, you know, fully understandable. And it, but it didn't happen, and it doesn't look like it's on the, the planning to close that entrance. You know, we also were, during the construction phase and the FISU Games, the road became discovered as an escape off Main Street. So that fact alone means that the traffic has increased. And, and, you know, as one of the points, you know, we asked, you know, if there could be, a couple of our neighbors, especially the ones at the top of the hill, we're right on the corner of Hillcrest and Marcy Road, we're asking for a stop sign to, you know, make things a little bit more controllable. And I think that that's in the works. I mean, that's a good thing. However, in my mind, that, that sort of implies that, you know, the idea is that you've got, we're conceding that there's going to be increased traffic because that's, you know, well, we'll help this out by installing a stop, stop sign. And that doesn't, that particular move doesn't change the volume of traffic or the nature of the traffic up and down Marcy Road. So that's, you know, basically our concern. You know, we've got, you know, pets and, you know, our neighbor sent kids and traffic on the road. If you, if two cars are passing, it's not possible for those cars to pass without one car going onto somebody's lawn or driveway or into our Cedar Edge, which has never, has never really grown because it keeps losing branches. So, you know, these are, these are some of the, you know, we're basically talking about quality of life issue, I think. You know, we are year-round residents, and we, we would hope that the quality of life concerns that we have are taken more seriously than the, let's say, convenience of others, unless that's, you know, clearly an overriding factor. I don't know, I don't know who benefits from the, the entrance to the parking lot. I'm not sure who benefits from that. I don't know who the beneficiaries are. I mean, there are some, obviously, and it's, and it's become an issue of, you know, we think it's important to do this for this reason. I don't know what that reason is. And it certainly is not for our benefit. And if it's for the benefit of the people who work on Main Street, I mean, that's one thing. But up until two years ago, three years ago, they were still able to access that lot. If this makes it a little easier, maybe it does. I don't know, you know, what the, you know, the major overall benefit is, which would override what we consider to be a quality of life issue on Marcy Road. And then, and that includes Hillcrest as well, because those people, they have to go somewhere. So that's really the points, those are the points that we wanted to make. And, you know, we don't expect an answer right now. But, you know, I think we appreciated it being taken under discussion and then considered the points in our, in our letter. One of the points we suggested was maybe a sign that says there's no through traffic here, local traffic only. Mayor, I understand your, your point on that, and that's probably a good point that it's, that it's, you know, you've got to really, in order to do that, it has to be probably something pretty serious. But other issues that can mitigate the traffic flow, and again, the nature of the traffic, which is not always, you know, slow. The other, the other day, I was pulling onto Marcy Road and from, from Hillcrest, a big SUV was right in, you know, come charging up the hill and was, you know, right in my grill almost. And, and he wasn't about to move. So I had to back into, back out into Hillcrest, which I did, and with traffic coming from both directions, one of them leaned on its horn. So, so it was not, you know, that doesn't happen often, but it does happen. And that could have been, that could have been, you know, it could have, it actually could have been an accident. Anyway, so these are my issues. I don't know if Karen, you had anything to add? We went over our list pretty carefully before we...
Like, we do have leftover roofing nails from our recent projects. So it's just obnoxious. People get out and they, after their shift, and they roar up the hill, and they run into things. And it's just, there's, there's no reason they can't be pulling out on the Main Street instead of onto Marcy Road. And that's what we were told was going to happen. So that's what's going to happen.
Anyway.
If I could, John, it sounds like you keep implying that someone told you that this would be closed. Any idea who that was? Because none of us have any records that indicate that at all, and no one we've talked to knows anything about that.
Yeah, I, I, I would have to, you know, do some recollection and talk to my neighbors. But I can't give you...
That would be helpful. And two other questions. I really don't know where we're, we're going to head on this. You know, when we talked it over at the board level, we were the opinion that now that Main Street is done and not as congested and the World University Games are over, that it would really only be the locals using that that know about it. It would be interesting to see if that count goes down. We were thinking about putting a counter in there just to see how busy it is. But if it does stay open, would it, would you recommend a one-way or a reduced speed limit, like, say, 15 miles an hour? Any thoughts there?
We're, we're not really in favor of a one-way.
Okay.
You could find facing the exit that says left turn only when you're leaving the parking lot. And that would funnel people out onto, onto Main Street.
Yeah, well, I think that would defeat the whole purpose. Coming down that hill and trying to come out blind is not a good solution either.
I mean, one way would be, either way, we're going down the Main Street. I mean, if I come out my driveway, it's one way down, I've got to go to Main Street. If, if it's one way... way up, then I've got to go down to Main Street to get home. So, as does everybody else on that street. You know, one possibility might be something similar to what was done on Hayes Street, but I'd have to give that some thought, and talk to my neighbors as well. But, but in your, in your letter, you mentioned that this is, you know, might be impacted by what happens with plans for possibly a garage, and, but that, I don't know if that's ever going to happen. I mean, I was on a committee 15 years ago where we, where we, and it was a pretty robust committee, looked into plans for a garage. I mean, Jim Edchcombe did this beautiful design, and I was on a committee and fully in favor of that, but it didn't happen. And I don't know what, what the possibility of that project happening is. I mean, and we were, we were fully in favor of that. I mean, even though we live right next door, and we're going to be impacted, you know, by that.
I think what happened with the garage, John, as far as that goes, before the pandemic, they were talking around $4 million to stick a second level in there and add 100 spaces. And now that we're after the pandemic, that number has jumped to $12 million. So, as far as a full-fledged second deck goes in there, that's off the table. The only thing that now might happen is possibly going in there and terracing it. But even that's committed a very high number.
No.
The cost of everything has just tripled, unfortunately.
Right.
And that garage wasn't going to have an exit onto Marcy Road. There would be a gate for snow equipment to enter and exit the garage, but there wasn't going to be a vehicular exit onto Marcy Road either.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Okay. Like I say, we're not done with that yet. It will be interesting when things calm down here to see if that gets used less, and we do have it in mind to try to put a counter in there as soon as we can. But we will bring this up at a future workshop.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And again, I'm just wondering who the main beneficiaries of that are, and why it's vitally important. I don't need an answer now, but just posing that question.
Well, I think the beneficiary of that would be people that live on Main Street and park in that garage, giving them two options, one to go out onto Main Street or go up the hill. I think, you know, it is a public road, and it does give them that option of going either way. But like I say, we will discuss it. We will have to see how the traffic count looks, and go from there.
Thank you.
We also definitely have a stop sign at the top, and I think no matter what, that's a good idea, just to slow people down on Hillcrest, and for the people that do come up Marcy Road, it's a good way to at least let them get out without being hit.
Yeah, I agree with that. All right, well, thank you for your time.
And thank you.
Yep, appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move into clerk items, and it looks like number one is the regular board meeting minutes from February 6th. For those of you that were there, do I have a motion to accept them?
I'll make a motion.
That one, too.
Second. Any corrections or comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. And then for the public hearing and the regular board meeting minutes, do I hear a motion to pass those?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and for those of you that were there for that, any other corrections?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Anita. I know that's, that's a lot of work. Item, item C, the KSPE Proposal of Professional Service and Engineering Planning Grant. I don't know if all of you are familiar with that. If not, I'm sure Mindy can fill us in on that. If not, go ahead.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
If not, entertain a motion to accept or approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes as well. And then the ADA coordinator, many of you probably have heard that we've worked on that, and Anita has agreed to take on that responsibility. I'd entertain a motion to appoint Anita to that American Disability Act coordinator.
Can I just ask a question? We were talking about the someone from the county.
So Derek had implied that that person had agreed to it, but they had not agreed to it. They said that they had other, that they already had a lot on their plate, and that they didn't think it was exactly the same duties. They didn't want to just take ours additionally on. He referred us to another person at the county who gave Brad some materials for me to refer to as needed, but, yeah, the county was not interested in taking this on. Yeah.
Are they able, you know, I'm conscious that, you know, places with more scale have somebody who does this full-time and is, you know, kind of able to probably.
This person is really just a gatekeeper.
Yeah, that's all it is.
But I think that that's kind of exactly, so that's, that's good and expected.
I would be leaning on the same professionals we always have, other engineers.
You'll have access to those.
Oh, yeah. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, great.
Good.
Good.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, and Janet, I don't believe that there was any requirement for it to be anyone with any training. It's really a liaison for someone to connect to people that have the knowledge and the party, correct?
And to receive grievances, that's correct. That's why.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Anita. And then I guess the second part of that, you were going to send this over to Janet also. Do the procedures that we got from the county look like something we should approve, or?
Well, I think, I think that it's not really a procedure. We have a grievance form that would be, and the procedure would be that any grievance would now go to the ADA coordinator. Well, separate and apart from that.
It's not too much of a form.
Separate and apart from that is an adoption, if the board is in, if the board is in agreement of this, just adopting basically a policy or recognizing actually the village will comply with the American with Disabilities Act in all of its activities, including employment, including communication, and including construction. So it's not necessarily, well, it's a policy that the village board would be adopting.
And to that, and your email of, the email that you just sent approved, seeing as how the annual meeting is coming up, this would be a new policy that you would include?
Correct.
Yes.
So you can adopt, right, or you can wait and adopt it as part of the annual meeting adoption of policies?
I'm happy either way. Does any, is there a reason, a better, a reason would help us to wait, or not really?
No, no, there's no, no right or wrong.
Yeah. Yep. Get it in place.
So, so just so I'm understanding, we're just adopting the policy and the procedures, or just the policy?
It's both.
It's both.
Very good. So do I have a motion to accept the policies and procedures for the ADA?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Anything else Anita to come from you tonight?
There was one more item, the perma conference under clerk items.
Sorry, I do that off, and I move on too quickly. So I guess we'd need a motion for, and is this the perma conference that's open to all the board members, or is this more of a working?
No, this is the annual one that Chuck, Justin, and I traditionally attend. I think last year we opened board members if they wanted, and obviously we can, but it's, I mean, I look at it as really more for the employees who are in those positions. There is going to be, I mean, there are other perma conferences that I think are more appropriate, but.
The agenda seems fairly operational.
I, that's how I always look at it, yes, but.
So then we would need a motion to allow those that are in need of updating their credentials or, or in need to go for further education to be allowed to go.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, was that the last one, Anita, or did I?
That is.
Okay. And then that moves us into the treasury items, and we're in affidavit number 14. Who did, who did those for us?
Here it is.
I'm sorry?
Peter.
Peter.
Ah, thank you, Peter. Could, could be your last one, huh? Thank you very much for taking the time, and do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And under treasury items, Mindy, do you want to speak to the grant that we got?
Yeah. Oh, just before 4:30 today, Kathy Spazo sent an email out that the grant that we had applied for, for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, we received $6.4 million from the WPQIP grant. When Emily was here, Emily did all of that application work with Kathy, and worked very, very hard with her, and actually sent her a thank you to let her know that we had received it, because she was very integral. The entire project right now is slated at about $11 million. So this will cover almost half of it.
How long did that take?
What, the application process?
Well.
Started it in July, so we submitted, but it was a period of time, so you had to get on two different lists.
Okay.
And then from those lists, grant money that was supposed to be approved in November, which was approved in November, and then EFC went out and decided who was going to get it.
It's not the water plant.
It's the wastewater. It's the sewer plant, wastewater. There are many, many, many mandates that the governor and state have put in place that we need to, yes, that we need to fix and upgrade, so this will help in that process.
Okay.
Got some money.
Yep, I'm sure there's a lot to be done from here, but good work getting us to this point. Anything else?
If the entire project, proposed project is not done, do we still get all the grant money?
No.
Then you have to do all.
Yeah.
$11 million.
Yeah. And this funding runs in conjunction with the engineering planning grant, and we just approved professional services for it.
Okay, anything else, Mindy?
Uh, no, I think that's it.
Okay. Once again, thank you for all your work on this, and I'm, thank you for reaching out to Emily Eckert for us. Okay, anything to come under new business? How about old business?
I kind of got an old business. This is Janet's business. In the past, we've, I remember, built nice and easy. We've contemplated, yeah, and to, and to fashion it after the town law, and then that didn't happen, and I don't know why.
We can't fashion it after the town law, because the town law that's currently on the books would not pass judicial muster. There have been some recent cases on municipal laws that talk about dilapidated buildings and all of those, that now have outlined pretty much by, through case law, what a local law has to say in terms of what is, you know, definitionally and procedurally what can be done.
Can we get this from NICO?
We could ask them, but there's a kind of a twist with that property. The county owns part of it.
Taxes.
For back taxes.
The town is looking at taking it.
Taking it back, yes. Just so you know, it's, it's.
Taking what back?
Taking.
Well, they haven't, they haven't fully proposed on it, so.
That's right, because there's already one parcel. There's one parcel, there's four.
Four parcels that, four, five parcels that make up that property.
Yeah.
There's delinquent taxes on two or three.
Right.
There's a discussion going on among the county, the town, and the property owner to try and straighten it all out. It's, it's quite a mess. And the county may end up taking the property by taxes, and taking the property that has the lots that the taxes were paid on, maybe by eminent domain. It's, it's, it's in a whole big.
And the property goes all the way back to Spring Street.
Right. So, right now, there's a lot going on in that that doesn't meet the eye.
Right, but regardless, having.
Is that why the deal fell through, all these?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, but regardless, we still need that law in place.
I agree, because there's a property on Chippity Lane, I would say.
Yes, that's correct.
We'll work on that.
I'll work on that, okay. Thank you.
And I have nothing under mayor items, anything from commissioner reports?
The website is, is up and running. We still have a couple of tweaks. Anita is diligently adding things, and it's easier to manipulate, so hopefully she won't have a problem. But what, were we going to do pictures under everybody's name? We were going to do pictures, right?
Sure.
Yeah. Why not do only, no, just for board members?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Do you want them professionally done? I'm just asking, just, or, or do we want, you know, baby pictures, or selfies, or what do we want? I'm just being.
Everybody go out to the beach.
Well, I, we, you know, Jordan had done such a nice job, and I didn't know, I know the town is going to do the same thing. Do we want to pair with the town, you know, have an American flag? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
Maybe that's not a bad, I, I'm assuming you're talking about Justin, Jordan. Maybe we could see if.
Yeah, Jordan and Craig, yep.
Jordan, Craig, sorry, yeah. And maybe do the town and the village if they're interested all at the same time.
I can, I'll reach out to Derek and see what he thinks about that.
I think the consistency would look good. I mean, that's part of the reason we brought together two websites, so.
We'll just all have to get dressed up? Okay, that sounds.
Oh, Dale sweaters, that's right. We can all bring in one Dale sweater, and we can all take it off and switch on, off and on.
Bloom sweater, huh? And I've looked through the website, it looks very nice. Just looks like a couple of the board members needing to be switched. Have you already done that, Anita?
No, but that is my focus tomorrow.
Okay, very good. No, once again, a lot of, a lot of good work there. Thank you very much, Jackie, for your part in that, and Anita.
Oh, no, Anita and Tracy and Haley did a lot of work.
You too, and Emily.
We just sat there.
We're a good team.
Well, thank you very much. It came out very, very good. That's been a lot of years in the making, hasn't it? Two?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, is there, that was one of the original LEAF grants, and it's taken us a long time to finally come to fruition with that, but is that something that somewhere in there we can promote that LEAF gave us that, or what do you suggest?
You know, yeah, we probably should put their logo on, on the website. Do you, I'll get you a JPEG that you can just.
I'm sure he named it.
Oh, Haley. Okay.
Okay, very good. Anything else under commissioner reports? Okay, I don't believe we have any correspondence. And any comments from the public? And any comments from the public?
I'm just going to follow up on my last meeting. I can't. Mayor, first off, thank you all for letting me come in crash in this meeting today. Mayor Dublin, I'm Scott Lewis. I don't know if you were present, are present at the last meeting, but I was all sorts of fired up about what I've been hearing about the emergency room being closed down in Lake Placid here. And I ended up by saying, you know, if this happens, if you allow this to happen, you're going to have a tough time looking at your constituents and how they care about their well-being. So I just wanted to follow up and see where that was at and what conversations have had. And, you know, if I do a Google search, the last thing written about the closure, I think, is from October. So I feel like the public's left in the dark a little bit, so.
Yeah, the last correspondence that I've had on that, we had a meeting, oh, I think it was Tuesday, or I'm sorry, Thursday of last week, and that was with Roy Holzer, the supervisor from Wilmington, myself, Derek, and we had the health department there and some people from the governor's office. And more or less, more, you know, stated our concerns and different things and brought them up to speed and aware of how important it is to us. And they said they would take that under consideration. There's not a lot of leverage that we have. You know, at this point, all we really can do is let them know our concerns, but that was done. And so we're still waiting on the health department's rendering.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else? I see someone's. What's that?
I said Lauren's hiding in the corner.
Oh, okay.
There. Your one is, and you know, will you be the ADA coordinator for the town?
No.
It's the village.
Just the village.
Unless someone chooses, but currently, just the village.
Okay.
Wasn't the answer on that, the difference was if you had the employees or more?
I believe that's right. I don't know if the town is required to have one.
Um, I was wondering if the village had in place ADA responsibilities before that.
We did not.
We had no official policy, but.
We became aware that we should have a designated person to be the ADA compliance officer or coordinator. And upon becoming aware of that, we moved forward with making the appointment.
But it was always a part of the work of the engineers to handle that for any project. So it's not like it was not thought about.
That's right, any building or construction project, the professionals that we hire are in charge of compliance.
This is kind of brought to light by the one case.
By this recent case, yes.
Yeah, I'm not recalling his name, but.
Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Hughes, yes, okay. I know Derek mentioned about the Mullen place for the town potentially changing. I was wondering if that was happening before the March election?
No, absolutely not. I had not, I had not been informed of that myself, so, yeah. The March election will definitely be in this room.
Okay. Mindy, I think it'd be great to set up an interview with you and whoever else to talk about the sewer grant potentially tomorrow. Um, I will see what Brad's availability is, and I can email you in the morning. Okay. Um, that's all I've got right now. Thank you.
Okay, did you have a good vacation?
I, yeah, it was less vacation, more moving, but.
I was hoping you'd gotten away. Okay, very good. Is there anybody else? Yep.
I don't think there's anybody else in the room. I, I would like to have a small, short executive session for litigation.
Okay. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move into executive session.